Call the October 28, 2014 Regular Workshop Meeting of the School Board of St. Lucie County to order, and we extend our warm welcome to all of you. Glad you're here with us tonight. It's nice to see so many smiling faces with us tonight. If you would stand with me please for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Kids at Hope pledge.
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exists in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Indeed. And Madam Superintendent, we will move right to our Special Orders of Business.
Fabulous. Thank you, Madam Chair. And the first Special Order of Business is a focus on Bluebird Educational Productions. And Mr. Terry Davis will come forward at this time to introduce representatives from Bluebird and proceed with our recognition this evening. Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Yost. The Bluebird Educational Foundation and its founder and chairman, Mr. Darrell Bay, has been a friend to St. Lucie Public Schools for the past eight years. Bluebird Educational Foundation has provided many educational musical trainings and performances to students since its inception. They have presented such musical experiences as Blues in the Schools, student workshops, clinics with professional jazz artists, and Jazz Appreciation Month programs. They have made donations to Forest Grove Middle, Bay Shore Elementary, Samuel Gaines, Palm Point Research, Lincoln Park Academy, St. Lucie West Centennial High School, Southport Middle School, Port St. Lucie High, and Fort Pierce Magnet School of the Arts, just to name a few. In recent years, Bluebird Educational Foundation started a program called Recycling in the Key of E. So what is recycling in the key of E? I'm glad you asked. Bluebird asks friends and patrons to make donations of old instruments to the program. You know, those that are in the back of the closet or in the attic. Those that have been there since your child graduated from high school, or perhaps even since you graduated from high school. The instruments are refurbished by a musical partner and then given, yes, given, to a student who's interested in playing in the band in middle school or high school. This way, students have their very own instrument. To date, Bluebird has donated some 50 musical instruments totaling approximately $20,000 to our students. At this time, I invite Mr. Darrell Bay, Chairman, and all board members present of Bluebird to join me here at the In addition, I ask that Joe Colombo, Bandmaster at Forest Grove Middle School, Brian Hosts, Bandmaster at Northport Middle School, Jason Albert, Bandmaster at Lincoln Park Academy, and Lee Walker, Bandmaster at Westwood High School, to join us as well. Now, I know that you're looking at Mr. Walker and wondering about his blond hair. Let me explain. The marching bands attended their music performance assessments this past weekend. Mr. Walker challenged his students. Well, the band made a superior rating, so he's honoring their challenge. So congratulations to Mr. Walker and the Superior Westwood High School Marching Panther Band. Madam Chair, may I ask Mr. Bay to say a few words?
Please do.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Members. Music saves lives, and briefly, I'm going to talk about exactly how that works. But first, I want to thank the St. Lucie County School Board for allowing us to participate in this wonderful program of music and helping to enrich the lives of children. I want to thank Dr. Kevin Perry for coordinating this event. I want to thank the Bluebird Educational Foundation Board, some of my members are here today, for supporting this great event. And I want to thank our partners for repairs and adjustments to instruments that have been donated to us for Drummers Only Drum Shop in Port St. Lucie, Florida. I'm an avid jazz fan, as most of you probably know, and I subscribe to a magazine called Downbeat. And not only is it a jazz publication, but it talks about music in general, mostly jazz though, but music in general. And there was a very interesting article in it that talked about music, how music saves lives. But in this particular case, it took a life to be taken in order for lives to be saved. A young man by the name of Aaron Rushing was shot in the back and in the abdomen in Chicago as he was preparing with his jazz band, the Kenwood Academy Jazz Band, to perform in a joint collaboration between the Chicago Symphony Orchestra and two nationally-known jazz artists and theatrical performers. This type of violence kind of illustrates what's going on in the cities around the country, and it kind of comes home. It actually happens here in Fort Pierce. The editor of the Downbeat magazine wrote a very moving article or comment about this gun violence. And if I may, it's very brief, I'll read it for you. "As the editor of Downbeat, I've seen numerous examples of how music education can be a positive influence in the life of a teenager. Playing music in a school band can help kids to grow, to express themselves, to learn the value of cooperation, and to develop the ability to improvise both on and off the bandstand. Music education in many cases keeps kids safe in the literal sense. Every minute that a kid is in the bandroom playing music is a minute that he's not getting shot. It's a safe zone. It's a place to learn life lessons and develop friendships. It's a place where a mentor can influence a kid to focus on his homework and his music lessons rather than being tempted to hang out with troublemakers. The benefit of being in band could influence a kid's life choices for decades to come. Please support the art in your local schools. Signing up for band might be the thing that saves a kid's life. We wish that the person who shot Aaron Rushing had taken up the saxophone rather than picking up a gun." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bay. Tonight, Bluebird is donating instruments to 13 students so that they can continue to make beautiful music in their school bands. I'd like to also add that one of the instruments being presented tonight was donated by our own Pam Dampier. Donations to Forest Grove Middle School. Students, if you're here, please come forward, Mr. Colombo. A trumpet to Diego Gonzalez. A clarinet to Lamont Davis. And a trumpet to Juan Juarez. Badalo. A baritone to Amber Campfield. A baritone to Charles Gillespie. A saxophone to Jarvin Patrick. And a flute to Nadia Keef. And Lincoln Park Academy. A trombone to Jordan Barbieri Johnson. Fort Pierce Westwood. A flute to Terrence Payne. A flute to Jakiri Amaxo. And Mr. Bay heard about a promising young trumpet player at Westwood High School who is growing as a musician under the direction of Mr. Walker, and Bluebird would like to present to Chorius TK Hudson with a new intermediate-level trumpet in hopes that he will continue Mr. Bay and board members, thank you and Bluebird Educational Foundation for your dedication and support to St. Lucie Public School students.
along with the students who are the recipients of these wonderful items. So congratulations to all parents. If you're in the audience and your student is a recipient of one of our awards this evening, our instruments, please stand, and I think they're moving towards the back, but thank you for being here. Mr. Eric Stern will come forward at this time for Action on Healthy Kids. He'll present the Florida Healthy School District Award.
Thank you, Superintendent Yost, School Board Chair, Mrs. Holly, and the rest of the school board members. Before I read my script, I stood before you two years ago to present you with your first Civil Level Healthy School District banner flag, and I am proud, really proud, to return two years later on behalf of Florida Action for Healthy Kids and Florida State Coordinated School Health Partnership, grassroots organizations that represent healthy school districts and provide resources to make all students healthy throughout the state of Florida. So you're close to being a Gold Level District. You're very close, and we'll hopefully motivate you in over the next two years to become Gold Level. So the Florida Coordinated School Health Partnership, Florida Action for Healthy Kids, Florida Association of School District Superintendents, and our newest sponsor, Florida Healthy Kids Corporation applaud your district for establishing a culture and climate in which students and staff can reach their potential. The coordinated school health approach your district has embraced is effective in reducing and eliminating the barriers to learning and supports academic achievement. Recognition is determined by submission of the Florida Healthy School District Self-Assessment Tool. And we really want to point out, your wellness manager here, Ms. Fabricant, has done a great job kind of coordinating all the different departments, putting together the pieces. It's a pretty comprehensive tool that encompasses the eight areas of coordinated school health, which does a fantastic job. So I really want to commend your district on a certain levels of improvement that you've shown over two years. While we know what you do in employee wellness, you are a leader in most counties in the state of Florida, so again, you've excelled in employee wellness. But some other areas that you really improved on over two years are family and community involvement, the healthy school environment, health services, nutrition services and education, and lastly, physical education. And if you really want to take a look at the assessment tool to know where you need to go to become a Gold Level winner, you have a great resource right here with Ms. Fabricant. So I applaud her efforts, and I applaud your efforts. And I believe, Mrs. Yost, you were sitting here two years ago in a different role, maybe as the Deputy Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent? Okay, so I got that correct. So with that said, I'm not going to keep you for a long night. I want to open the flag up, and if we could take a nice picture together, that would be great. So thank you
And thank you, Mr. Stern. We will display that proudly. Moving forward with additional recognition this evening, our volunteer coordinator, Ms. Martha Underwood, will recognize schools who have earned the Silver, Golden, and Golden Awards, as well as five-star awards for 2013-14. Ms. Underwood?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Yost. My name is Martha Underwood, and I am very proud and honored to serve as her volunteer coordinator. I served as a volunteer coordinator at the school site for 30 years, and I loved recruiting and listening to volunteers. Come back and tell me how happy they were to participate in the program. Principals, you have chosen some awesome volunteer coordinators this year. I'm so happy and excited to work with them, and their enthusiasm is very contagious. Here in Florida, we're known as the Sunshine State, and our children are the sunshine of our lives each and every day. So let's never lose sight of why we are here. We are here for our beautiful children. The first award I would like to present is the Silver School Award. I would like to give you a little background of the criteria for this award. The school must have a volunteer coordinator who provides coordination of the program, placement of students, orientation and training for the staff, and student volunteer supervision. Student volunteers and faculty both must receive orientation and training. Elementary schools are not eligible for this award. This award is given to secondary schools. However, this year, I'm making a little exception on my own. We have a large -- you will know that I do that every now and then. We have five high schools that provided a lot of student volunteer hours to our middle schools. And this year, I am going to recognize those five high schools. So with that being said, I would like to present the Silver School Award for 2013-14. Would you please come forward when I call your school name? Fort Pierce Central High School. Fort Pierce Westwood High School. Forest Grove Middle School. Lincoln Park Academy. Northport K-8. Oak Hammock K-8 School. Port St. Lucie High School. St. Lucie West Centennial High School. St. Lucie West K-8. Southern Oaks Middle School. Southport Middle School. Treasure Coast High School. Westgate K-8 School.
Have a photo before you proceed to the next area. I mean, we're not making exceptions
Congratulations on the Silver School Award. Next, I will proceed to the Golden School The criteria for the Golden School Award is this award goes to all schools, elementary, secondary, and high schools. Eighty percent of the school staff participate in a training for having a school volunteer. A volunteer coordinator is designated for recruitment, placement, training, supervision of the school volunteers. The school volunteers' hours equals twice the number of students enrolled in the school. Okay, let's proceed with -- please come forward when I call your name. Alapata Flats K-8. Bay Shore Elementary. Chester Amore Elementary School. Fairlawn Elementary. Barusta Elementary. Forest Grove Middle School. Francis K. Sweet Elementary. Lakewood Park Elementary. Lawnwood Elementary. Lincoln Park Academy. Mariposa Elementary. Northport K-8 School. Oak Hammock K-8 School. Palm Point Educational Research School. Parkway Elementary. Savannah Ridge Elementary. Southern Oaks Middle School. St. Lucie Elementary. St. Lucie West K-8 School. Village Green Environmental Studies School. Weatherby Elementary. Westgate K-8 School. White City Elementary School. Windmill Point Elementary. Port St. Lucie High School. Fort Pierce Central High School. Fort Pierce Westwood High School. Congratulations on the Golden School, and I love the big group. That means everyone is chiming in with us and receiving the award. Yes, this represents thousands of hours of volunteering. That's what I want for this county. Okay, the next is the Five-Star Award. A school must have, the criteria is the following: A school must have a grade of C or above for the school year to qualify for the Five-Star Award. In order to qualify for this award, a school must achieve 100% of the criteria in the categories of business partners, family involvement, volunteers, student community services, and school advisory councils. The schools must also have a portfolio that documents the achievements of each criteria. Please take back to your faculty and staffs what a great job they did and are still doing to achieve these prestigious awards. The portfolios were beautiful, and I did send that on to Tallahassee when I called and made a special effort to do that. Okay, this is the Five-Star Awards. Please come forward when I call your school. Alapata Flats K-8. Bay Shore Elementary. Fairlawn Elementary. Forest Grove Middle School. Francis K. Sweet Elementary. Lawnwood Elementary. Lincoln Park Academy. Mariposa Elementary. Morningside Elementary, Mariposa. Morningside Elementary. Northport K-8 School. Palm Point Educational Research School. Parkway Elementary. Savannah Ridge Elementary. Southern Oaks Middle School. Southport Middle School. St. Lucie West Centennial High School. St. Lucie West K-8 School. Treasure Coast High School. Village Green Environmental Studies School. Weatherby Elementary. Westgate Westgate K-8 School. And White City Elementary.
Our five-star school awards.
Yay. I'm looking forward to 100% participation in all awards, please. Thank you so much.
And let's recognize Ms. Underwood as well. She's a part-time employee doing a full-time job. We thank you. And our consent agenda is next, Madam Chair.
If you just round numbers of all the schools that were participating and double that, that's phenomenal, phenomenal. Congratulations again to all of you. Really, volunteers are a backbone for our school district, so thank you to all of you for the effort you put forth with that. Board members, it is now time to move to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion at this time to accept the agenda as presented. Moved by Dr. Mills, seconded by Ms. Hilsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. At this point, board members, are there any conflicts that you need to declare on any items that may be coming before us for vote? Hearing none. Madam Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board approve a total of 16 consent agenda items this evening, beginning with number 4.01 and concluding with 11.01 as presented.
Board members, we have received the recommendation. Are there any items that you wish to comment upon? Any items that you wish to discuss? Hearing none. We have received the recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Ms. Hensley, seconded by Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries 5-0. And on then to our other business, the stipulated findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty and final orders. Madam Superintendent?
I recommend the board approve stipulated findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty and final orders, number 453 through 466, as presented.
Board members, we have the recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Ms. Hilsen, seconded by Ms. Hensley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And Madam Superintendent, time for your update.
Thank you. It is a pleasure this evening to welcome all of you to our meeting, and we have some exciting information to share this evening. I see Sean Boyle in our audience, and he is our Executive Director of the Children's Services Council. Would you like to come forward and tell us why next Tuesday might be such a very special day for this community?
Sure. And I'm note-free at this moment. Children's Services Council, just a reminder, we're an independent special district, and we do five things for St. Lucie County. First thing that we do is we make sure every baby's a healthy baby. Second thing that we do is we stop child abuse before it happens. Third thing that we do is we keep kids off the streets, keep them in school, and keep them off drugs and alcohol. We do this by funding 53 children's programs that last year reached over 34,000 children here in St. Lucie County from birth to 18. And we partner frequently with the school system. We are one of the funders for school nurses. We provide the reading mentors at 15 elementary schools. We are one of the largest funders for Kids at Hope Initiative, many programs, including after-school programs. Fast-forwarding to November 4th, which is what you asked me to come up here for, November 4th, 2014 Election Day, the Children's Services Council is on the ballot. And we were established by this community in 1990, and since that time have been funding children's programs that have been making a difference in the lives of our children here in St. Lucie County. Come November 4th, there is a question to reauthorize the Children's Services Council of St. Lucie County. And I prohibited, both in my position and here I am today, to tell you how to vote. Let me just tell you the implications. If the reauthorization vote is a yes or no, it's a simple proposition, yes, to reauthorize the Children's Services Council, the Children's Services Council stays intact, remains to fund children's programs. If the answer is no, the Children's Services Council will close down, and the $7 million, which also draws down an additional $8 million to fund children's programs, goes away. There is no other entity out there, the United Way, other local governments, both the county and the cities, to pick up that funding. To put that in perspective, the 53 programs that we fund, 44 of them receive 50% or more of their operating funds from us. So if the Children's Services Council is not reauthorized, the services for children 0 to 18 will look a lot different than it does today.
Thank you, Sean. That is an important matter for our community, and we appreciate your summarizing it without notes.
Thank you.
We also have an opportunity to obtain a custodial update this evening.
We also have an opportunity to obtain a custodial update this evening, so I believe that Mr. Marty Sanders will begin, joined by Carolyn Rarick to follow. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Madam Superintendent. Just give a little update and go back to a little history for the viewers that may not be as familiar with the custodial process as the board and the district staff is. In 2013, we looked at custodial services, and we really looked at privatizing it as both a cost-cutting measure and an improvement in services. We recognized that the school-based custodial services needed more structure. The board elected not to privatize, but to reorganize it. We worked with our union partners and came up with a plan to reorganize it from a site-based control of both the hiring, qualifications, training, and standards to a district-based training and standards. So in the summer of 2013, we hired Carolyn Rarick, who will follow me, as her custodial coordinator. We also hired our trainers, our area managers, also known as our area managers, and hired 38 plant managers to oversee the operations of the schools. It was a big change for the district because we've always had site-based management, the principal, and you know, the custodial services were only as good as the training that they received at that school. Now we've got a system that trains all of the schools, and Carolyn will tell you a little bit about that. It was a big change for the schools, it was a big change for staff, but the good news is we've made a great investment in our people. We've built a lot of capacity. We've improved our custodial services. We've injected the schools with both capacity and people, and also better equipment that has resulted in a lot better efficiencies in what we do. You've seen it, and this board has been very complimentary on seeing the grounds, for instance, is one of the things that was the first to see the changes. And all of those changes have resulted in better services. Not only have we increased the capacity and the people and the system and had better services, we've improved the working conditions, I think, for almost 300 people. They now have a high regard for them because we're investing in them. We have Carolyn and the trainers there, out at the schools every day, working with our custodial staff, assuring that they're cared for and that they're heard, and they're being invested in, both in training and listening to their needs as well. So I will first assure the board that you've made a great investment in your people over the last year, year and a half. We've got good things to come in the future years. You know, it was a very wise move on the board by not privatizing and going with a reorganization where we could build capacity. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carolyn.
It is my pleasure to give you our custodial services update since the last update we gave in January. The reorganization of the custodial department with the goals of improving service standards, improving accountability, dedicated training and development of our staff, and increasing quality through standardization. Dedicated training and development of our staff has resulted in promotions from within. We have promoted two plant managers to become area managers, Rose Aboule from Village Green Environmental Studies, and Rudy Mana, formerly of St. Lucie West Centennial High School. We promoted him from Martin County to be one of our area managers. We also promoted site maintenance workers, Gary Adhill to Lakewood Park Elementary, Dirk Smith to Village Green Environmental Studies, Norman White to Mana TK-8, and Jeanette Marin to Bay Shore Elementary. So our goal has been to train our own staff, who better knows our schools and knows our processes and the people that we have here in our county than the people that are already working for us. So that's been a great change for us. In standardizing processes, we've standardized custodial supplies district-wide. We've replaced at no cost, including installation, 10,310 paper towel, toilet paper, soap, and hand sanitizer dispensers. The standardization was very important because we had site maintenance workers when loading their carts at night that had three or four different kinds that they had to load depending on what rooms they were servicing. In addition to that, if somebody was to run out of something and needed to borrow from their neighboring school, they couldn't do that because they didn't have the same type of supply. It did not fit in their dispensers, so that's been a really good change. In addition to that, we've arranged through our supplier to have direct delivery to the schools, whereas in the past it was drop-ship to the warehouse, and then from the warehouse had to be distributed to the schools. So that helped tremendously in the timing and the delivery of our supplies to the schools. Our first summer, summer cleaning for us is so very important. It's when we do our deep cleaning, the waxing of the entire school's organization of that was very, very important. What we did was we borrowed one person from each elementary school, and two people from each middle school, and K-8, in addition to two people from every high school, to loan for a period of time to the summer schools. And I think we have some principals here from summer schools that can vouch for the fact that that was so tremendously helpful, knowing that some of them, depending on when their programs ended, only had a few weeks to have their schools ready for